...from the invocation that will be led by Reverend Laurie Stevens.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will you pray with me? Lord God, we are here to do the work of the county Franklin County of Ottawa, Kansas, the United States of Kansas. Try this again. Lord God, we're here to do your work here in Franklin County, Kansas, of the United States of America. Lord God, we pray that you give the wisdom to the commissioners and those that are presenting to them your wisdom. Let them be led by you. Let the commissioners make decisions that are based for all people. Lord God, be in this meeting. Be with each of us as we go out from this place for safety and security. In your heavenly name we pray. Amen.
Takes us to correspondence and organizational business.
Commissioners, I do have one thing to begin with. As you know, we had Keith Clark resign and took another job with Johnson County. And so we have been in, since that time, for the last few months, we've been looking for a replacement for him to take over as the Director of Community Corrections. During that time, Allison Dickinson has served as the interim. And after careful consideration and application from her, we have determined that she is our best candidate and wanted to extend the job offer to her, which she accepted. And so we're just publicly announcing that Allison Dickinson is, will be our Community Corrections Director going forward.
Great. Congratulations.
She is here. Any comments or congratulations you'd like to offer?
Glad you did it. Congratulations. Okay. It takes us to public comment. Do we have anyone signed up?
Our first public comment's Jean Hurt.
Okay. A citizen desiring to speak on an item not on the agenda may do so at this time. Discussion is limited to five minutes and the commission will not take action to discuss items at this time. Discussion should be limited to matters of county commission business and public comment is not permitted in regard to personnel matters or on pending legal matters. Items introduced under public comment may become agenda items at a later date. Jean?
Jean Hurt, 107 Jefferson Street, Pomona, Kansas. Again, today we see that we have an empty chair up there. Steve Harris. I was present at the meeting last Friday. The people of the 4th District showed up. It was full. The people expressed their opinions to him of why he's not performing his duties here. He explained it. But the worst thing about it was is when you see someone that will deny and sit there and say to some people that they weren't there from the 4th District, that they shouldn't have been there. And you know, there was a number of people that wasn't from the 4th District there, but they all have a right to come and listen to him on why he's doing what he is. Now, for myself, I was allowed to speak and I made my point. But the only thing that I don't, what I didn't like while the whole thing was is that the newspaper did not really put the whole deal in the article on the paper yesterday. But the radio station did more and more so than the other entity of expressing about how they felt. And to me, I had, I've got people that are now wanting me now, believe it or not, me, as I expressed to him that night. They don't have no representation, they feel. And there's two issues out in that area right now, I'm going to bring up, not today, but I will. And for, I'm proud of those people that showed up. They voted unanimously to have him resign. And he would not do it. So now, as you probably all know, that I hope the people go forward and pursue the petition for what they feel because they feel they've been neglected to this commission. And like today, we've got a number of issues that will be done today that he will not be here for, for them to be represented. It's a shame, but I don't know how else you're going to get around it when someone does this. Thank you.
Freeonne Hollinger?
I'm Freeonne Hollinger, 3090 Neosho Road. Commission District Number Four. Thank you, Mr. Hurt. And Mr. Hurt and I sat side by side this past Monday night, and we have not been in cahoots, but I certainly agree with what he just stated. I bring to you the fact that I have been a resident for 75 years come this December at the above address that I just announced. And I have voted at every, as near as I can remember, every election in Harrison Township. There are several of you present, including one commissioner, the county administrator, and I did not look back in the audience, other than Mr. Hurt, that were present and heard Mr. Harris, not once, but more than once, tell me in that crowded room, Township Hall, that I was not a member of his district. I was one of those that asked for his resignation. I also stated that I was a working advocate many years before this chamber became a five-person board. And that included voting and working for a county administrator. Not just a grapeviner, but one that really got out and worked for it. I ask you not to waver, to do your best, whatever you can, under the law. To help us get rid of the man that remains unseated in this room again today. I have been, in past years, on the payroll of this county. I worked under three different treasurers in the county courthouse. I spent 20 years behind the scenes on the special board for the voting. The reason I was eliminated from that job was the voting system that is now in play. It took only one call to our county clerk to verify that I was correct. And we had a discussion of the others that are across the river from the Merida scene that are in Commissioner Harris's district.
Ms. Hollinger, one moment, one minute.
I ask you to do everything possible that you can, under the law. We're paying him a lot of money. And his term isn't, doesn't expire until 2019. Majority of this term is in the future, not in the past. Thank you.
Okay, that takes the consent agenda. You'll notice a little bit different on the consent agenda. We've added several items that were in the discussion on the study session. So we're able to do several items with one motion and one vote. If any of the commissioners have any of these items they'd like to put on the items of business, they can make a motion and we'll move them from the consent agenda to the items of business. So right now, what we need to consider and approve today on the consent agenda is the Franklin County Commission Minutes for the June 15, 2016 meeting and the Commission Study Session for June 27, 2016, to consider and approve claim vouchers in the amount of $396,537.18. To consider and approve the payroll for the period of May 21, 2016 through June 20, 2016, in the amount of $1,094,507.05. Also, to consider approving, applying for the 2018 All-System Bridge Program for Bridge Number 17 located on Texas Road between Sand Creek and Pawnee Roads. To consider and approve change order number one to the Jackson Road Bridge Project in the amount of $78,204.68. Consider and approve KDHE Maternal and Child Health Family Planning Grant Contract. Consider and approve Kansas Health Foundation Assessment and Capacity Building Grant for the Food Policy Council. And the last item on the consent agenda is consider and approve participation in the Emergency Management Performance Grant Program. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
No move.
Have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion, a second, Janet?
Commissioner Waymar?
Yes.
Commissioner Renaud?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
I just want to say, before I vote, all these things we did study in our study session last Monday, I know a lot of you weren't there for that and might not be familiar with that. And I have a little bit of concern having all these on the consent agenda, but I think all of these are straightforward and I'm going to vote yes for it.
Chair Howard?
Yes.
It takes us to items of business. Our first item of business is to approve the RMH Board of Trustees Member Recommendation. Matt?
Good morning. I just wanted to come back and follow up on what Mr. Duderstadt, our board chair, his presentation, his recommendation to reappoint Mr. Gaddert to the RMH Board of Trustees for another term. So I'm asking for consideration on behalf of RMH and the Board of Trustees for a three-year reappointment for Mr. Gaddert on the RMH Board.
Any questions? Not, would look for a motion to approve Mr. Gaddert's.
No move.
Motion?
Second.
Motion, a second.
Commissioner Renaud?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
I also want to say, just appreciate Mr. Gaddert for coming to the plate and doing it again for the hospital. I think he's doing a good job.
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Commissioner Waymar?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes. Thanks, Matt.
Thank you.
Got one question, Matt, before you leave.
Yes, sir.
The new bill by the governor to reduce Medicaid from 60 to 56 percent, how's that going to affect the hospital?
It affects our net income received from Medicaid by approximately $200,000. So that is lopped straight off the bottom line, effective July 1st. And there's some question as to whether or not Franklin County, KDHE has us labeled as a semi-urban county, which would cause the 4% to affect RMH in our bottom line. CMS does not recognize a designation as semi-urban. They recognize only urban, rural, and frontier, whereas from the CMS level or Medicare level, we're designated as a rural community or rural county. And by virtue of that, we feel like the 4% Medicaid cut shouldn't go into effect. We have petitioned KDHE to see if they would consider granting us that designation, pulling us out of the semi-urban designation and classifying us as rural, because rural counties and frontier counties, as well as critical access hospitals, weren't affected by the cut. And so it's our size hospital where we're bigger than a critical access hospital, but we're not as big as in a Latham Medical Center that, yeah, it will affect a Latham Medical Center to some degree too, but their payer mix isn't so heavily weighted towards Medicaid. They've got a really quite pretty payer mix with a lot of commercial paying insurance. And so $200,000 is $200,000 a year. And we're going to have to adjust accordingly in order to absorb that impact and hope that at some point in time that'll come back. We were, the irony in all this is we were hoping for the state to expand Medicaid. And here we are, going the opposite direction and actually taking deeper cuts. And I don't want us to focus necessarily on the money issue of it, but it's going to create an access problem for our community. And that, to me, is the bigger problem in this whole process with the state trying to balance their budget on the back of Medicaid. Did that answer your question?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
Thanks, Matt.
Thank you.
The second item of business is to receive a presentation from Play Task Force for Teen Playground Request.
Mayor Kayler?
Thank you. Commissioners, thank you so much for your time today. My name is Sarah Kayler, and I am on the Play Task Force for the city of Ottawa. Behind me, I have not only an individual who has given a tremendous amount of time to, not only her love of physical activity, but her improvement, her desire to improve parks in the city of Ottawa, but also youth that have actually had tremendous input on the teen park, which is the presentation that you have in front of you. So let me introduce those individuals before we go through our PowerPoint presentation. I want to make sure I got to kind of move around to make sure I got them all here. So we've got Jackson Allen, who is here, and he has sat on our teen task force. We've got Tucker Mace, who has sat on our teen task force too, and Caroline Weber, who has sat on our teen task force. And we're going to ask them here in just a few minutes when we get done with their presentation, for them, their input, so that you know that your future constituents, who will all be voting in just a few years, right? You'll all be voting, right? That's what I thought. Will be telling you about what they like about the proposed teen park. And then I'm going to actually yield to Ms. Fonda Rose, who is our chair on our Play Task Force. So, Fonda?
I will click. All right. You're going to be my clicker. Yes. Thank you again for having us and listening to our presentation. All right. Play Task Force has built several playgrounds here in Ottawa. All of those playgrounds that we've built up to date serve the ages of kids five through 12. Again, you know, all one area. We've pretty much met that age group. Now we're wanting to move on, presenting to teenagers, giving them a place to belong, somewhere to go, just to give them a positive place to be. Our bold goal with this is to reduce the alcohol and drug use in USD 290 by 8% by the year 2020. Lack of drug-free social opportunities is one of the opportunities, including a smoke-free area. Our big idea is prioritizing teens for increased physical activity, social development, and play. This is a complement to other initiatives, including enforcement, education, et cetera.
And I may want to point out that the city of Ottawa has actually been a play city for six years and with that has brought many opportunities for us to have outside grant funding so that we can build those parks. And play is not a bad word. And it's not a bad word in the city, but it's not a bad word in the whole entire county. We all, as adults, play too. We just don't call it play. Some of us call it golf. Some of us call it fishing. Some of us call it other things. But play is play, and it's a good, healthy thing to do.
Part of our bold goal, reason we want to try to reduce that drinking average is Franklin County is actually, has a higher drinking average among teenagers than the state of Kansas. One of those statistics that we're not too proud of. So we really want to try to bring that down, making sure that teenagers have a public place to go and be seen with friends. At least gives them a different opportunity to go out and, you know, perhaps steer away from drugs or alcohol. Issues that we have, health issues, we have some teens into drugs, alcohol, drinking, smoking. There's societal problems, vandalism. You know, there's some sort of vandalism weekly on our parks. You know, sometimes it's good vandalism. It's beautiful artwork, but still it's misplaced and we need to have to cover that up. Part of this teen park, there's actually a graffiti wall where kids would be able to put their artwork and have it be seen. Opportunities, they're going to have a lot of physical activity opportunities, elements of risk, challenge, a place to just show off, be seen. They have a sense of community, a place to belong, and just basically to let them know that their community cares for them, that they've provided a place for them to go and be safe.
Recent studies have shown, and it's really been brought to our attention here at the city of Ottawa, as a parent myself of a teenager, the idea of risk does scare me. I don't like the idea of my child hanging off something or jumping off something. But we also know, and recent studies say, that if we don't give teens an opportunity to do some kind of risky behavior in a safe environment, they will find risky behavior in unsafe ways. So this is a great opportunity for us to give our teens an opportunity to explore risk, to try risk. And you'll see that in the pictures that come.
We got one, when we decided to build a teen park, Play Task Force had some ideas of what we'd like to see in the park, but we're all adults. And sometimes our ideas don't match up with what the teens really want. So we developed a teen park board. We had 20 teenagers here just, and using them to get feedback from them. What do you want? Go out, tell your friends about the park that we're looking at building, and what would they like to see in it? Talk it up a little bit and see what's out there, what's needed. So we had a couple of meetings. We met at the Gopert Building. We had some of our playground builders come in, talk to the kids so that they knew what could be done, what can be built for you, okay? We even had the teenagers vote. Go ahead and move on, Sarah. We had the teenagers vote. You can see the top three amenities were a zip line, a challenge course, and a graffiti wall. Were the top three picks from the teenagers from what they, when we pushed the survey out to them. So with our big idea, anything you want to add, Sarah?
No.
Moving on. Okay. To create teen adventure area to encourage healthy, active lifestyle. Ensure that this alternative activity provides the opportunity to be social, be visible, build skills, increase activity, practice those risks with jumps, fuel their independence and self-actualization. Just really that place to belong, to show off in front of your friends, take a couple of healthy risks, hey, can I do this? Oh, man, I failed, and go right back after it again. So many kids these days can't accept failure. They think everybody, you know, deserves this ribbon. You know what? I fail almost every day, and I learn something from failure, and that's what's important, okay? If I can't do this jump, or if I can't make it, you know, through this obstacle course without falling, okay? I go back and I try again and again until I master it. And that's kind of what this risk-taking is all about.
And just so that you know, little statistics for you. Statistics say that 26% of our population in Franklin County are kids 0 to 18, which turns out to be just under 7,000 individuals. So those individuals need a place to be. And I might want to point out too that that's not just individuals from Ottawa. We actually have coaches from Wellsville who are bringing their teams to the city of Ottawa to play in our parks and to participate in our parks. And Mrs. Rose's husband is a coach here, or is a coach in Wellsville, and he will attest that he is bringing his players here to do activities here in the community. So those activities are not just for Ottawa citizens, but they're for all of Franklin County citizens.
These were our top three amenities that were voted on by our teens. Right now, we only have one full-size basketball court here in Ottawa. Way underserved. We do have one in the process, getting ready to be added to. Zip line was the next one. Luckily for us, zip lines are fairly cheap, and it was the top amenity. So we're looking at putting two zip lines in, perhaps making them almost like racing zip lines, on your mark, get set, go, and down the zip line we go. Graffiti wall. Again, we've had to cover up some beautiful artwork. Just, you know, some of these kids have some amazing talent, and unfortunately, when it's misplaced around our community, it has to be covered up. This is what we're looking at for the skate park, VMX Park. We are looking to move the existing skate park to this new location. We're adding a half-pipe to the existing skate park. And then off to the right there, kind of that L shape, that's a pump track for scooters and bikes. And if you kind of think, if you start at the top and pump your legs, and it makes you go up and down the hills and around the curves, that's why it would be called a pump track. The pump track is movable, so once kids can master a certain shape to it, city parks and rec will come in, adjust it, move it to a different shape so that it's constantly changing for these kids, you know, allowing new opportunities. Thanks for them to try and master new. This is the challenge course that we're talking about. If any of you have ever seen the TV show American Ninja Warrior, these are some of, excuse me, these are some of the pieces from that show. The green underlay, this is everything that the playground manager could build for us. Unfortunately, we didn't have the funding for all of that, so we reduced it down. We had our teenagers vote. And these up here with the brown underlay are the ones that our teenagers voted on as the top picks. This is our proposed location, 15th Street, so not far from here, just across 15th Street there. Huge area, all down, all the way to 17th Street there.
One thing that we do want to point out about this particular location is that it is easily accessible, as you can see, by the Prairie Spirit Rail Trail, so it goes all the way through town, north and south, and then along 15th Street. As many of you know, there is a sidewalk that connects- know, there is a sidewalk that connects right from Main Street all the way down to Eisenhower Road. The City of Ottawa is getting ready in the next, by the end of the year, we will be connecting the east side of 15th Street all the way out to Lincoln Street. So, essentially all the way out to the cemetery with sidewalks. So, this place, we feel like, is really a prime, or a prime spot for our teens because it is accessible through the Prairie Spirit Rail Trail and on 15th Street. So, you can get there safely by walking or biking or skateboarding.
So, this is an aerial view of our proposed location. It's been handed out to you. Caroline's passing them around. If you don't have one now, and it kind of has some insets here to look at. Number one is our graffiti wall. Just moving on down the page. Eight, this is a seating area. One of the things some of the teenagers have said, they may not want to go there to be active, but they want a place to just be able to hang out, to sit, socialize, chit-chat with their friends, have Wi-Fi, free Wi-Fi within the gazebo area so that they can, you know, whatever they're doing, you know, Snapchat with their phones, whatever the latest thing is with that. Basketball courts, we've got two full-size right next to each other, a gazebo, or, excuse me, the agility course in between, and then another one. One of the things that we learned within our team, from our team board, was that a lot of times when they go somewhere to play basketball, adults will come in and run them off from playing basketball because the adults want to play. So, they need a place to go. More basketball courts are definitely needed with this. Number three, that was the agility course, the American Ninja Warrior stuff that the teens had voted on. Four, those are our zip lines off to the side. Nine is our shelter house. And then five is our parking lot. We have permission to cross Prairie Spirit Rail Trail and put in a parking lot there. A second graffiti wall next to the parking lots. Six is our pump track. That's that movable skate, or, excuse me, skateboard and scooter track. And then seven would be the existing skate park being moved from over by the Don Woodward Center and adding in more skate park amenities.
So, and all of this doesn't come for free. I know that you guys know this, just as much as the City Commission knows this, that it does all come at a cost. We have several phasings. We don't believe that we are able to completely raise all of the funds, nor is the City of Ottawa, nor are we asking the county to make a, make a gift to this particular idea all in one. So, we're doing it in three phases. And so, if you'll see on your map, and if the public has the map too, we certainly would love to get you more over on the right-hand side. We know that the first, the first session, or the first group that we will be tackling will be the skate park, which is in green, skate park, the basketball courts, and the zip line. And at that, that's going to cost roughly $35,000 for us to put in. We really don't want to do this in phases, but we also don't want to wait until we have all of the money because we know that it is quite potentially, before we get this all done, these individuals will be adults, and we want them to have the opportunity to use it. The next part of our teen park is the pump track, which comes at a hefty price of $25,000, and the half-pike, which is at $20,000. And we're not really sure how quickly we'll be able to move to Phase Two, but we will do so soon as we can. But Phase One is our goal right now. And then Phase Three is the shelter house, the two graffiti walls, the agility course, which I know Mrs. Rose has brought up several times, but because we are a play city USA, they have partnered with American Ninja Warriors, and so they gave their time to us. They actually sent somebody to Ottawa to help us design the particular agility course at no cost to us because we were a play city. So, we were able to use their information to move forward on planning an agility course, and we believe that that will finish out at least this part of a teen park, and it's the very first time we've had a teen park here in the City of Ottawa. We have several opportunities for individuals in the community. If someone is listening and just wants to give a great gift to the City of Ottawa and to our rising citizens, we would certainly take a gift of that, of whatever magnitude it, you can give. But one thing I do want to point out to you is that the very first gift we have here, the very first gift, is one from OMS students, the very first gift. If that doesn't tell you something, that they're excited about this and that they believe in this, they did this fundraising themselves through a softball, or through a dodgeball tournament. They did this themselves, $1,500. And I'm sure that some of that came from people in this room, and I appreciate that, but they took it on themselves and said, this is so important to us, we want to give the first gift. And OMS students did that. Then, Bill Henningson Memorial stepped up, and they have pledged $7,500, $7,500 to fund part of this. That's how important the Bill Henningson family believes that the teen park is. The City of Ottawa has pledged $50,000 of the $215,000 total cost towards this. We today are asking you for a pledge to say that you believe in the teens in this community, you know they are the future, and we ask you to do that with a financial pledge to this particular teen area. And I believe that at this time, now I'm going to actually let our teens come up and tell them, tell you what it is that they're excited about, about the teen park, and maybe what it is they do now without a teen park. Because oftentimes, I know commissioners, you hear, there's nothing to do in Ottawa. You can't say that after this teen park is built. There'll be something to do. So, Jackson, come up and tell us. Give us your name and tell us.
My name's Jackson Allen, and I'm really excited about the basketball courts of this park because it's going to bring a lot of kids my age and either older or younger into this park and have a good time. Because there's no basketball parks on this side of town. It's on the north side, but besides the ORC, but you have to pay to get in, and no one wants to do that. But this town, without this park right now, it's kind of boring, and this, it will, it will bring life to this town and fun and memories, so.
Thank you, Jackson. Caroline?
Right now, when I want to go out and hang out with friends, I'm forced, and my parents are forced, to triple-check that I'm going to be somewhere safe where I know that nothing harmful is going to be pressured on me. And I'm thinking about that constantly every time I'm hanging out with friends, no matter where we are, whether it's someone's house or anywhere. And if we implement this teen park, then I'm going to have somewhere that I can just go. And I just know automatically that I'm not going to be pressured to do anything unsafe, and that it's going to be a place where people of my own age are going to be there to simply have fun and to play and not to partake in any activity that I wouldn't want to normally partake in. And that's really important to me.
I'm Tucker Mace, and probably one thing I'm really excited about in this new park is the skate park amenities. When I, probably a couple of summers ago, I'd ride my bike down to skate park probably once a day. And it was kind of in a rough neighborhood, and there's rough crowd down there. And I think with this new park, it'll be a better neighborhood, a better skate park, better people down there, and it'll just be better for the teens.
Regarding the location of this particular park, we purposely located it in public's view. As Chair Harris can, or, I'm sorry, Chair Howard, no disrespect, Chair Howard can attest, teenagers will find a place to go, and we wanted them to find a place to go that would be in the public eye. You can actually drive down 15th Street, and you'll be able to visually see the teen park. You can take the Prairie Spirit Rail Trail, and you'll be able to see all of the teen park. We will be putting up a natural barrier so that our citizens that are right behind the teen park won't be bothered by any sound. And so, you'll see trees and shrubbery that'll be put up as a part of that teen park. But we've certainly, we think, thought of everything, and we haven't done it alone. The teens behind us have done it, and actually 17 other teens have done it, too. We have 20 teens that are sitting on this board that have been doing this for a couple of years and telling us what they need, not what we want to give them, what they need. So, I think we stand for questions.
Have you already purchased this property? Is that part of the original cost that you showed the 215?
The property already belongs to the City of Ottawa.
It is a City of Ottawa's property.
I think I heard this story for about 60 years.
Pardon me?
I think I heard the story about teens don't have anything to do in Ottawa for the last 60 years or something.
We're trying to find an answer to that. And instead of us continuing to complain about it and continuing to hear that, we're trying to find an answer to that. I believe, Commissioner Dunn, I may have been at the park with your children at some point, and we probably have said the same exact thing when we were younger. So, yes, we, I've heard that even when I was younger, and it was, I think, more than 17 years ago. Sorry. Is, did you ask about age limit? We actually haven't set out the rules for, for the teen park, but it's going to be designated as the teen park. Now, if adults can't play by the rules and try and rush the teens out of there, well, then shame on those adults because it is designated as a teen park.
You plan on having supervision anytime it's open?
No, it won't. It's not actually going to be gated, and that's part of the reason that we put it in such a visible area because it is visible to the entire community. As you know, 15th Street is extremely busy, so we're hoping for some self-policing, too.
Will the courts be lit?
We anticipate that we will be lighting, yes.
I remember that was one of, a lot of times, we just wanted to play catch or something like that, and we ended up having to go to the tennis courts. It's the only place you could turn on the lights for free.
Tis true. Yeah. So, let's give these teens an opportunity to really do something good. And I think one thing that I want to point out to you as a commission, and I know that the City Commission deals with this often, too, is this really helps build soft skills. I mean, this is where kids learn to communicate with each other. This is where kids learn to be accountable to each other. And if we can give them those opportunities with such a teen park, we don't think all the problems are going to be solved, but we certainly don't think that more problems will be created by a teen park. So, we think that this is just one opportunity to create a better quality of life for our teens.
Was Forest Park looked at for this project?
I don't believe that Forest Park was looked at for this project, simply because it is, it is almost out of space. We want to keep part of Forest Park as a green park, too, so that there is space just to walk and to picnic and to roam. So, Forest Park was not an option that we looked at. And we really wanted to give something, we want to make sure as the city grows, that we're also growing our parks, too. And we know that there are very few parks that are on actually this side of, there's, just as Jackson Allen had said, there are no public court, or public basketball courts this side of Forest Park.
And part of being a playful city, we work with Kaboom, a national nonprofit organization, and they actually did some mapping of Ottawa for us in what we call play deserts. And so, we're trying to fill in those play deserts. And so, putting it here at this current proposed location helps fulfill one of those needs of a play desert. We start building some of our parks here south instead of north.
And I could be wrong on this, but I believe that part of the definition of a play desert is, is if you can't walk to that park within eight minutes. If you were to start right here, you couldn't walk to Forest Park in eight minutes unless you're a really fast walker. So, we have added new parks. The City of Ottawa added a park on the east side of town, and this is our new addition.
Mayor Kayler.
Yes.
If the Commission elected to pledge.
Yes.
There would not need to be anything done immediately as far as payment. It would just be when all the money had been pledged or all of the fundraising was done, where you had reached the 215,000, whether you'd received that or whether it'd be received in pledges, and then the request would come?
A portion of that is true, yes. We are not actually, we are going to build in phases, so we are certainly actively seeking to build Phase One right now. So, we're looking for a pledge from Franklin County Commission to help us build pledge, or to build Phase One.
Right. And I'm just wanting clarification of when you were expecting payment.
Yes. We anticipate that it won't be, it'll probably be in the next year. We're anticipating that, and I don't know this for sure, but we're thinking that you may be using some of your alcohol tax money if you were to add this.
Actually, that, Commission, for your information, that wasn't attached on here, and I'm not sure exactly why, but special alcohol tax, the Commission passed a resolution a couple of years ago stating that you would only use that for the outlying communities, not for the City of Ottawa, that you would use that for any of the other cities that come in, come in from the rest of the county. And that was handed over to oversight and management of that, through that resolution, was handed over to Janet to oversee that. Janet would.
So, we, so we send out letters at, usually in about the October timeframe, once the majority of the monies come in for the year, and we know what our, what our funding level is in that account. And we use that money and distribute it amongst the, usually among the different recreation commissions that are around the county. And at that time, when we passed that resolution, the Board decided that the City of Ottawa was getting a large amount of alcohol money, and so they decided to use the money that we get as the county to send that out to other areas, to have activities out in the other communities for, that aren't, that wouldn't be normally available through their funding levels.
If I remember right, it's a fairly small amount, though.
It is. We usually only give like $400 to $500 max to each of those communities, and usually we only have three or four participants. So, usually about, like Pomona, Pomona, Williamsburg, and Princeton are usually our primary ones. Occasionally, we'll have Wellsville throw in a request, but it's not very much. We usually have about 1,500, anywhere from 1,500 to $2,000 in there a year.
As far, as far as, just to provide some guidance to the Commission, this is not something necessarily needs to be decided today. As you know, in the next couple of weeks, we will be gathering. I'm working through the state budget forms right now to get the tax levies calculated, what that's going to be for the next year. We can discuss, they've requested $5,000 if that, memory serves me. We can take that under advisement at that time, and when we have discussions about the, about what we're going to be doing for funding requests that we received this last year, we can discuss that then and make a determination, and I can let Mayor Kayler know if that is acceptable to the Board.
Where are you at? Is this 215 just for the first phase?
No, it's for the total cost.
Where are you at with fundraising?
We're just at the beginning phases. We're certainly hoping for the Commission to come up on board, to be an early adopter, and to say that teens are important to you as a commission, and that you're, and that the 7,000 teens that are here in Franklin County are, have value. And so, we want you to come on board with the City of Ottawa and say, yes, we want to have a teen park for our teens.
If I could say something, Sarah. Not many people know this, but yesterday at Rotary, Rotary Club voted to give $5,000 to the teen park that, you know, we, as a group, felt like that this was a major project, and that's more than we've given in a very long time to any project. So, that's how strongly the teens and other leaders in the community feel about the park.
Thank you. Any additional questions for us? I really just want to thank the teens here that I, I want you to know that, that, that got up early this morning. This is like, this is like their 4:00 AM, you know, for, for teenagers. I can guarantee you that my teen that's out in the, in the, in the audience was not happy when I woke her up at 8:00 AM. So, it's a really big testament that they were willing to get up and come and talk to you about the importance of a teen park here in our community. So, thank you for your time, and, and we thank you for your support of the teens here in all of Franklin County.
Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you, guys.
I think it's important, and something we need to support, but I think we can work out the details probably in our, during our budget session.
We look forward to hearing from you.
It takes us to our last item of business. It'll be to receive a presentation on the Non-Competitive Heritage Grant Program for the Franklin County Historical Society. Jim? Or Deb, whichever one first?
Deb has ushered me up. Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Jim Ogle. I'm the
I'm the executive director of Freedom's Frontier National Heritage Area and I have some additional material to provide you with this morning to the material we sent in advance, so if you'll give me a moment. Thank you very much. Freedom's Frontier National Heritage Area was established by Congress 10 years ago, but we operate as a private 501(c)(3) that seeks to tell three very specific stories, the shaping of the frontier, the Missouri-Kansas border war and the enduring struggle for freedom. Provided you with some information that kind of flushes out those three stories and what we tried to do with them as part of the packet today. I also included a map that showcases the 41 counties that are a part of what the area that we serve. 29 of them are in eastern Kansas, 12 of them in western Missouri. For us, these stories are very significant and important because it is one of the things that makes us unique. There are 48 other national heritage areas across the country. Each of them are focusing on their unique heritage stories along the way. Uh, while we are a, created by an act of Congress, uh, and operate as a private entity, we are able to receive federal funding from the national, through the National Park Service for the national heritage area and approximately $300,000 a year comes to us from the National Park Service, but only after we achieve fundraising in our own area. Now, we can raise funds in a very traditional way and we do, where we ask people for gifts in support, but the, uh, act also allows us to achieve funds by having, working with organizations and governmental entities where we serve as a fiscal agent, if you will, for different partner groups and the money passes through us on the way to the partner group. So, what I'm here to talk to you about today is a way we just established to try to, if you will, incentivize organizations and governmental entities like yourself to participate in this process with us. Um, you were provided a letter from Commissioner Nancy Thelman. Uh, she is, sits in Douglas County and Douglas County participates in our incentive heritage grant program. And it allows Douglas County to take their initial contribution to their groups and gain an additional 10% that we provide from the federal grant money we qualify for, along the way. And that's what we're hoping through our non-competitive heritage grants to have you do with the money that you and your budget process put forward, uh, in support of the Franklin County Historical Society. It's very simple process. Uh, we receive the check, we turn it around immediately to the target organization like the Franklin County Historical Society and then we work out the terms of the grant, uh, to go to the historical society in addition to the money that you're sp- spending in support. I've also provided you with a packet that explains what we do with our partners and the book that you've received, uh, we created on the 10th anniversary this year of Freedom's Frontier. It tells the stories of how this money for grants are being used in our region in order to maintain and promote our unique stories in this area. So, I'm very hopeful that you will choose to participate and take advantage so that we can bring more of that federal money down into our area so that we can provide it for grants right here to you in Franklin County. I'm open to your questions.
So, you're a regional historical society?
One way to think of us is, is very much that we bring together all the different parts of the story and shape a larger story as we reach out in the region. We're particularly involved right now in developing signage that will be consistent throughout the region for travelers to find historic sites and continue their discovery of the story. That heritage tourism has a potential to provide significant boost to local economies.
But you don't warehouse artifacts or-
We do not, we, we, uh, rely on all of our good partners to do that part.
Deb, would you have any comments that you'd like to make? Please at the microphone. Thank you.
Freedom's Frontier isn't just a regional historical organization, it also includes tourism and we have participation from tourist agencies all throughout the area. Freedom's Frontier has been an invaluable part of our process of, uh, serving Franklin County, uh, through education, uh, that they've provided, through grants that they've, their own interpretive grants that they've provided for us, um, all kinds of wonderful programming. And this is just a particularly easy way to, uh, for us to get $7,100 for next year, uh, for them to get, to, to be able to access another, another 71,000 of their federal allocation. That's, that's all there is to it.
There's nothing we really do on this now. There's nothing we really need to do on this right now.
Not anything, I mean, largely with this, and we can talk about this again when, through the budget process when we're-